Okay, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this public meeting to order if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every reason and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve our minutes from our last Commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Would anyone like to address the board on any agenda items?
Can I pass paperwork's up to anyone here?
Sure.
Thank you, Tom Coyne from Manuka. Last session, I brought in an imaginary check that was written for $15 million and ripped it up to show the incredible savings of ripping up a non-spent allocation of funds. But in that meeting, it was brought to attention from one of the attendees here that I needed to take a look at the Home Rule Charter. Looking at the Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter, Section 1.1.103, Powers and Functions of the Construct, in 13302, Section C, it clearly says that this body does not have the authority to raise taxes above 5%. The Home Rule Charter, as I quote, "Upon imposition of such a tax, any millage increase which exceeds 5% of the preceding year's rate of millage shall be effective only if approved by a referendum of the qualified electors of the county." Looking at that and reading it, that tells me that you have an option of choosing 5% as your maximum, or if you decide to go 33%, at that point, according to your Home Rule Charter, which you swore an oath to, uphold and defend, you have 5%. If you go to 33%, it immediately stops dead until the next election cycle where it has to go before a referendum. That's the Home Rule Charter. You have no choice. If you want to pass it at 33% rather than negotiating as it is now, it's dead until the next election cycle, and you can't enforce it. And then you hope that the population of Lackawanna County votes yes for a 33% tax increase, and that's not going to happen. So it's time with a mandatory of 5% by the Charter to sit down, make some hard decisions. Look at the ARPA funding. I know there was an argument between 17 million, 11.3 million, and 8 million, but I think at this point, you're stuck with having to take some of it back out and use it for your loss prevention to give yourself time to work towards a solution on this for another year. Because legally, you don't have the authority to put through a 33% tax increase. You're not above the governing body of the city, of the county, and as a matter of fact, the governing of the body of the county specifically limits to you in your powers on what you're allowed to do. This is the latest charter that's out on the county website, so it's not an old charter. Pull it up yourself and validate it. You're bound by the law. Thank you.
Do you want to address that, Tom?
Yeah, Commissioners, that's completely inaccurate in that back in 2006, the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania, in the case of Moskowitz versus Cordero in Lackawanna County, struck down that particular provision of the Home Rule Charter. At that time, Commissioners Cordero and them tried to, they did impose a 35% tax increase.
Sir, your time is up.
They did impose a 35% tax increase, and the Commonwealth Court, it went up to the Commonwealth Court on review, and the court said that this particular provision violates the Home Rule Charter Act, and therefore, it's inapplicable. So it was stricken down by the court.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any reason why that's not reflected in the current Home Rule Charter that is on the website, then? If there's been a legal change to it and it's no longer valid, how come the county website still has invalid documents, then? Because that's what we're trying to look at, is that's what we see is...
It's case law. It's case law, that's all there is.
Again, why hasn't the Charter been updated to reflect it? Case law or not?
To amend the Charter would take a referendum to amend the Charter.
That is correct.
But it was stricken down by the court, so it's not applicable. Do you understand? I know you think you're a lawyer, but...
No, I'm just saying it should be noted, that's all.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
It should be noted.
Thank you. You can't change the Charter without a referendum.
Joan Hodawan, it's Scranton. Are we having fun yet? You smile up there. I know you've been up all night. I know you have the first reading of the proposed budget on today's agenda. So I need to address Commissioner Chermak's counterproposal. He presented it on October 29th, but nobody in the audience, especially us taxpayers, had the opportunity to ask any questions, and he wasn't present at the meeting on October 30th when you had your public session in this room. So I would ask Commissioner Chermak, we've talked about this offline, to explain to the taxpayers two issues that I'm sure they would like answers to. The first one is your proposal eliminating nine part-time and 38 full-time positions in the Office of Youth and Family Services. Everybody remembers the staffing crisis in that department that led to the loss of its license. So the question many of us have is, how can HR recruit for positions in that department if you eliminate all these positions? If I were a candidate looking for a job with the county, I would hesitate to apply under those circumstances. I wouldn't know what I would be paid. I'm not going to say, okay, hire me, and then you go to the Salary Board and decide what you're going to pay me. That's one issue I think you should address publicly since you're here today. And the second issue is, you propose restoring a 2.5% cost of living adjustment for non-union employees. According to your own figures, that equates to $421,000. But you need to keep in mind, once you impose it in 2025, it continues forever on, except that it compounds every year, so that in future years, it can grow, if they get a 2.5% cost of living adjustment in 2026, '27, '28, that grows to $453,370. So you need to explain your rationale on that. And the larger overhanging question, the elephant in the room, is how do we bring in additional revenue to pay for personnel cost increases? Take a look at the Police Union Collective Bargaining Agreement. Between 2012 and 2027, they get a 3% pay raise every year. Over 16-year period, that compounds into a 59.3% salary increase, okay? And you need a counterbalancing increase in revenues to be paying that kind of thing, and that's only one union. My own feeling is, in future contract negotiations, whoever represents the county is going to have to be a lot more demanding of the unions, because you're not in a position yet to have revenue coming in where you can be that generous. You know, 3% a year doesn't sound like much until you compound it year after year after year. So Commissioner Chermak, if you would answer those questions, because this is our first opportunity to hear from you.
So, and the good thing is, my lead on my Finance Budget Committee is here, so we can talk to him too later. So the approach that we took, and I'll try to make it as brief as I can, but the approach we took on our proposals for the budget was basically starting from scratch. And we took the approach of zero-based budget. And so when I said, all right, well, look, there's some remaining unfilled positions that have been there for a long time, we're going to start from scratch here. We're going to take them all out. Now, as far as OIFs, you know, we have firms in here that are supplying people. We have consultants and, you know, things like of that nature. So right now, that is functioning, and it's functioning as well as it can be at this point. But the other part of what I'm trying to say is, with a zero-based budget, when we put this whole proposal together, these are thoughts and ideas that my very highly qualified team suggested. So my answer to that is, when a department, no matter which, looks at some of my proposals, they would say to me, "We can't eliminate this," or "We can't eliminate that." So my answer is, we'll justify it. And if, when you justify what you're trying to say that mine is wrong, you justify it, and we'll look at it. Now, if there's positions that need to be added back in, we'll add them back in. But on the other hand, I want to know where we can save an indifferent section of your department. So it's a give-and-take thing. So, you know, my proposals are proposals. They don't necessarily have to be etched in stone, but it starts the conversation. I am trying to protect the taxpayers. It's their money. The other que, where did Joan go? Joan, what was the second?
The second one's a cost of living adjustment.
Oh, the cost of living, so, yeah. So we have some, first of all, all our employees here do a great job. We're at the prison, the Sheriff's Department, you name it. They do a lot of work. They do great work, and they work hard. A lot of them, compared to what it is in, we'll say, the real world, in the business world, they're extremely underpaid. Now, I know we combat that a little bit with, we have a very good health care plan, which, that helps a lot of people that want to come here and work. But as far as taking away the 2.5% increase and talks about increasing contributions and payments to their health care, and then on top of that, we're going to implement a 33% tax increase, I mean, that's pretty harsh on an individual. Now, our union people are all getting their increases because it's in their contract. So to me, when I look at the people that are not in the union, I say it's extremely unfair to those folks. They're the ones here doing the hard work. So once we come up with a plan, and if we're taking some things away, and it starts with the unions, and when it goes across the board, and when everybody is on the same playing field, then we'll talk about not giving increases. But just to take it easily off of the people that have no contracts or no union to support them, to me, is totally unfair. They rely on this, and again, they're not, certainly not overpaid by any stretch of the imagination. So in fairness to everyone here that works for the county, once we have a system in place where everyone doesn't get something or does get something, it should be across the board. So that was my reasoning for that. You know, my proposal wasn't all cuts. We also added back in overtime for the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department does a tremendous amount of extra things for us. We have buildings, we have magistrates they have to be, they have to transport juveniles to different states, and it takes a lot. Even last night, with election night, they were, you know, we have a bunch of the sheriffs here, and they're on overtime, but they're working to, you know, make sure everything goes smoothly and there's no issues. So we added that back in because, in my opinion, and over the past however many other years, the sheriff uses that. So to me, to take it out doesn't make sense, because we're going to have to pay it somehow at the end of the year. That's my opinion. If we don't, well, great, we don't. And what was the third thing we added back in?
No, that was it.
No, I'm thinking, oh, the Griffin Pond Animal Shelter. I know Penn State's here. I didn't address that one. But Griffin Pond Animal Shelter, every year, we give those people $200,000 a year to assist with operating their facility, which I'm sure is a drop, it's a drop in the bucket. But people have to understand, when a police officer, or if there's an issue with an animal in Lackawanna County, that's typically where it goes. And there are people that take care of it. So I thought to unfund that would be devastating. So we added that back in. So I think the decisions that we made and the proposals that we made were a great start to try not to initiate a 33% increase, and it brought a lot of conversation. And I think, I think it's a great starting point. You know, my wife works at Keystone College. They were on the brink of shutting the doors. The investor came in, and the first thing they did was gut that place. They got rid of people, they got rid of programs, and they started from scratch. Now, it wasn't an easy thing to do, but they're on the right track. Hopefully, that college will survive. That's just, that's the basic approach that I've taken to this, and again, it starts the conversation. We need to start somewhere, and we need to protect the taxpayers' hard-earned tax dollars.
Mr. Bowles?
Bob Bowles, Scranton. First off, Chris, as far as Griffin Pond goes, taking the money from the shelter, as far as I'm concerned, is criminal. What they do up there with the animals, I've been donating fresh pet dog food to them for the last four or five years. And as we speak today, I have a vehicle en route from Fresh Pet in Bethlehem, PA, to Griffin Pond with donated fresh pet dog food. That keeps them going. And to take any money from them, go up there and see what these people do with the animals, it's criminal what you're trying to do, number one. Number two, as far as I'm concerned, sitting here, looking at ordinance 240265, should be tabled. You have a lot of problems in here. You're caught in the Sheriff's Department, yet you'll give the District Attorney's Office all kind of money for the most incompetent district attorney we've ever had, has refused to prosecute black and white crimes by the true police department because of his personal vengeance against me, has refused. You cannot be giving money away to a prosecutor, so to speak, that has selective enforcement in his program. You're supposed to be the district attorney for all the people, and this is a guy who wants to become a judge. It's not what we could allow. You're throwing money all over. I brought up about the University of Scranton and their violation of the rule of God. You have not addressed it. You turned around, gave the hospital tax-exempt status. Look at the money their CEO gets, yet you took our money from it, and you want to raise the taxes. You can't give our farm away just because it's political around here, and we've had enough of that. You got to take a look at the people that are here. In this program that you're doing, there's so many problems in it. Treat it as though you were running a business, and you had to survive in a business, not at the expense of all the taxpayers in this community. Our senior citizens, our elderly people, they can't afford it. The school tax should end on an individual after their kids are out of school five years, and let the new ones, your children growing up, let you guys pay the new tab for what it is to put kids through school, because we've already paid our share. And after five years, that should come to a halt. You're not looking at the future around here. You're looking at a self-serving program to take on people here and give money away, as I just brought a couple of them up. And there are many more areas in this community. You could cut the use of vehicles in the community. You could go to natural gas on vehicles. You could go so many other ways to save the money and cost. Run this county as a business, and you'll have a better idea what I'm talking about. Don't listen to your so-called consultants, because they're damn clueless, because the real world speaks for itself. And you haven't addressed any of the issues I just brought up, and they're only a tip of the iceberg. Chris brought up ideas. You guys got ideas? But so is everybody else in here. Penn State has ideas. I'm an alumni of Penn State, and they need help. They're the educators of the future, not just kiss butt to the University of Scranton and these hospitals that are taking our money. You got to take the hardcore fact and treat it as a business. Get rid of your consultants who are just here for a paycheck and are lost in the real world. Kids can't even write their name anymore, and you guys are allowing that to go on. You got to change the structure of this county, and you got to change the structure of your thinking. It's not about you people or your political allies. It's about the people right here, the taxpayers, the senior citizens that can't even afford to put gas in their car today or pay the taxes. You got many areas in this county that you could cut, and you're not even looking at it. You're just adding and adding and adding. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Would anyone else like to address the agenda items? Dan?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tara Mondock. I'm the Associate Director of Client Relations with Penn State Extension here in Lackawanna County, and I'm joined by my colleagues Jennifer Mercero, our newly hired Client Relationship Manager, and David Mesersmith, who's in the audience with us, the Business Operations Manager. We're here today to request your reconsideration of the proposed budget for Penn State Extension and Lackawanna County's budget. For over 110 years, Penn State Extension Lackawanna County has been a cornerstone of our community, providing invaluable resources and support to our agricultural producers, families, and businesses. Extensions programs, resources, and technical expertise in agriculture, youth development, community health, have not only enhanced our local community and economy, but they've also improved the quality of life for countless residents, and we partner with many of the organizations to strengthen communities all around Lackawanna County. Today, I'm joined by agricultural producers, volunteers, and supporters of Penn State Extension who can attest to the profound impact of Extension's work. We also have letters of support that are part of the budget packets I've included and shared with each of you. From helping farmers adopt sustainable practices, growing their agribusinesses, partnering with community organizations in the Lake Valley Community Library, City of Scranton, to promote sustainability, environmental health, and engaging community, empowering our youth through 4H programs and the like, delivering critical educational programs in our schools that no longer happen in our schools, with community partners through community-based programs like Master Gardeners and our Master Watershed Stewards. We're enabling communities to battle food insecurity and food safety with our Food Families and Communities Program resources that are right here in Lackawanna County, just down the road. Those benefits of Extension are far-reaching and essential. Now, we've worked to align the strategic priorities of the county, particularly in supporting those farms, the family-owned farms here, and producers who are generating goods equivalent to $16.2 million, and continuing to find ways to serve 216,000 residents right here in Lackawanna County. The people here with us today are prepared to share their experiences with Extension and how we've impacted our community here. Reducing the funding for Extension would jeopardize those critical services, weaken our progress that we've made. So we urge you to continue investing in Extension, ensuring that our community remains strong, resilient, and prosperous. I want to thank you for your time. I know this is a very difficult, you know, decision you're having to make, given the situation the county is in, and so we want to remain a vital resource for you and a true partner going forward. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Dan Naylor from Benton Township, and I'd like to speak concerning the Cooperative Extension program. I think each of us would say that at an early age, there was different either organizations or programs that had, you know, a tremendous impact on your life, whether it was Boy Scouts, or whether it was midget football, or anything of that nature. To me, I'd have to point to the 4H program. At a very young age, I remember going to the barn in the middle of the night to see my first calf born. And that calf was named Joby, and, you know, I raised that calf, you know, and it was through the 4H program that taught me different ways of handling that and showmanship of that calf. Later on in 4H, one of the programs that I went to was the Legislative Breakfast in Harrisburg, and I had the opportunity to sit with, at that time, Senator Bob Mello, it was his first term, and State Representative Joe Wargo and John Vipon. And knowing Joe Wargo for a number of years, his family was friends of ours, he said, "What do you want to do in your life?" You know, and I said, "Well, someday I might have the opportunity. I'd like to run for office." And, "Oh," he says, "Stay away from it. It's a dirty business, a dirty business." And, "Oh," he says, "Stay away from it, it's a dirty business, a dirty business." But John Vipon and Bob Mello sat back and said to me, "Come here, we want to talk to you. If that's a passion of yours, it's only as dirty," and Bob Mello made this statement, "it's only as dirty as you'll ever make it," you know? And so, I mean, I have pursued that, and, you know, it had a tremendous impact on my life. But then I watched as my kids, you know, they had the opportunity to be in the 4H Programs, you know? I can remember my daughter Mandy coming home with her first skirt. Hem was a little bit off, but, you know, she had that opportunity, and it was because of the 4H Program. Later on, as I took over our dairy farm, there was many times where I turned to the Extension agents and had the opportunity to, you know, discuss what was going on with my farming operation, what was taking place with the crops, and was given sound advice as to what I needed to do, what maybe what sprays I needed to use, or, you know, what tillage practices I needed to use. So, you know, I came up here this morning without a note, because I wanted to make sure that you understood my passion and my conviction, that we need to make sure that we continue to fund the Cooperative Extension Program. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alan McLean. I'm a resident of Madison Township in Lackawanna County. I'm a member of the Planning Commission in Madison Township, and I'm a lifelong farmer and the president of the Wyoming Lackawanna County Farm Bureau. In that role, I represent a total of 477 members, 350 of them being from Lackawanna County, some are even in this room today. I'm here this morning to speak on behalf of the reinstatement of full funding for the Penn State Extension in Lackawanna County. As a farmer, the work on the farm is a 24/7, 365-day proposition. There's not much time to do extensive research on issues, products, or new methods. Farmers are able to rely on the Extension to have already done the research and provide us with the education and support we need on many fronts. In an area where the Extension has provided specific service to my farm is in soil samples. Soil samples are taken annually from my fields, and the Extension provides chemical analysis of those samples. From that information, I'm able to determine the proper types and amounts of fertilizer, lime, et cetera, to apply to the fields for optimum production. Whether we are farmers with 50 years under our belts or are brand-new farmers, we need help with environmental issues such as sustainable farming, regulation changes, crops and productivity, technology advancements, and profitability. The Penn State Extension provides this crucial assistance. As a community member, Penn State Extension provides educational programs specifically made for young people, such as the 4H Youth Development, which is a program that encourages young people to develop in leadership, citizenship, and life skills. There are programs for adults as well, such as the Master Gardener Program. With so many people wanting organic products, these programs provide community education and support to encourage sustainable gardening, health, and nutrition. There's a great wide deal that I could reference, but I'll stop here. I believe that the Penn State Extension partners with the local community, volunteers, schools, farms, small businesses, and corporations to address the community needs, foster engagement, and serve the specific needs of Lackawanna County. And I strongly recommend the full reinstatement for Lackawanna County, of Lackawanna County, to the Penn State Extension. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Carlin Priate. I'm a retired CPA. I was formerly Partner in Charge of the Northeast Region for Perenny Randolph, who later merged into the present-day Baker Tilly. I'm very familiar with Lackawanna County finances spanning over 25 years, as I was the lead partner on the audit of Lackawanna County when Perenny Randolph was performing the independent audits. Having said that, because of my background, I was appointed Chair of the Bipartisan Budget Study Commission back in 2021, after a millage increase associated with the pension thing in 2021. But our efforts were thwarted by Commissioners Nolteriani and Dominic, and really stonewalled by CFO Durkin, because we weren't getting enough information, and we were quickly disbanded. Having said that, I've been involved with the finances over the years, and I've been, obviously, even though I've been no longer involved in public practice, I keep up to date with respect to what's going on with the county, and I follow trends, and I follow things, and I've had an opportunity to look through this budget. And quite candidly, yes, there is a structural deficit, and everybody understands what a structural deficit is. It's really, you back out one-time revenues against normal expenses. And based upon my analysis, the structural deficit for 2024 was 13 million, it could have been 15 million, but again, it's how you, how you look at grants and things of that nature. But having said that, if the structural deficit is 13 million, or 15 million, why do we increase taxes 33% and generate 31 million? So in other words, if we were looking at a structural deficit of 13 million, well, we need to fix that coming into 2025. Why does it go from 13 or 15 million to double that, to 31 million? Because that's basically what a 33% tax increase does. It, okay, well, where did that money go? Why is the, why is the expenses going up? And again, when I look at the trends from 2021 to 2025, the spending is way, way above inflation. It's way above inflation, it's way above the assessed valuation of the county. Even if I look at two years ago, the, in 2023, the, the spending, and as I said, I have this here in my, in my analysis that I keep track of, and again, I, you know, maybe part of old school here, but looking at the numbers, but in 2023, the budget was $150 million. In 2025, this is two years now, 189 million. So it's a $40 million increase. Well, wait a minute, $40 million on 150, 150 million? That's way beyond inflation. Well, what's going on here? What is going on here? And it says, yes, there is a, a spending problem. The assessed valuation, which is based on the millage, is not going up. We don't, we're not in one of those counties that are growing and expanding, that we're having a lot of business, new people coming in, we just don't have that. Let's drill down, take a look at, like, let's take a look at some of the items that are involved. One question I have here, folks, is tax revenue. If I look at the millage and the assessed valuation over the last five years, we are way off and under-collecting the taxes. It's probably over $20 million, $25 million that we have not collected in taxes. These go into a delinquent taxes, what's going on here? All I know about, you know, it goes to tax sale, and it goes judicial sale, but these things are never resolved. And in the meantime, those failure of people that are not paying the taxes, of course, it's going on the other taxpayers. Let's take a look at the budget, let's take a look at the expenditure side. The salaries and wages are about 70% of the total budget. And again, Commissioner Chermak mentioned about unfilled positions, yes, that's probably eight or nine million dollars. Okay, that's add to the budget. We got Cadillac coverage on the, on the, on the medical. Why do we have Cadillac coverage? Nobody else in the county has Cadillac coverage. Oh, that's part of the unions, but we got to do a better job of negotiation. Contracts and services, $25 million. Oh, yeah, they're all no bid. We don't bid for contract and services. Okay, all right. And I didn't even get into all these other line items here, folks. I'm just telling you, there is a lot of fluff in this budget, and we need to be transparent and open about it, and, and let's talk about it, because there's things buried in this budget that the taxpayers don't know about, and we need to find out what those answers are.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on agenda items only?
Good morning. Len Dobson from Peckville, Pennsylvania. And along the lines of what Mr. Priate had laid out, I mean, there, there are so many hidden things that are in there, like, for example, you know, the Colts? We don't know what's actually happening with Colts. They doubled since the last year, from 1 million to 2.2 million. Was that increase anticipated based on the 1.9 from 2024? We talked about telephone and postage, but again, where's all this money going to? I mean, why, why is it budgeted by, you know, to increase by 32%, things like that? There's all kind of hidden things, and this is why, again, we had asked to sit down with you guys and possibly with PFM and decide what's going to happen, you know? Can we drill down into this stuff and look at it? I, I just think it's, you know, I heard you guys say that we were reckless, that, that, you know, that the budget was, that Chermak had proposed was not accurate, we, we didn't have our figures right, et cetera. But yet, how reckless is it to push through a 33% increase without knowing the answer to some of these questions? And, you know, on that line, a little bird told me, "We haven't even finished our financial statements for the county yet, for 2023, and we're doing a tax increase, they're only on the month of March." You know? PFM, they haven't finished their work, as we all know what they said in their meeting. They said there, there are more things to, to look at, besides what they laid out. And what did they lay out? They said that the prison, the, the insurance, like what he said, why do we need a Cadillac program? I've, in 45 years of being in business and being in management, I have never seen a program, gentlemen, where they pay you, for you, your family, and your wife, you know? They pay everything, you know? I've been in businesses where they had to make cuts. The first thing they did is they took away on the 401K plan. They were contributing 4% to 6%. First, it was 6, it went down to 4, then it went down to 3, and then finally, they didn't contribute anymore. There are a lot of cuts that we can make here, and I'm asking you once again, let's sit down together on a bipartisan basis, let's not make this about politics. Let's make this about these people in the county here. And, you know, I'm going to leave you with a thing that happened, you know, when Chris asked me to do this, I was with Mr. Priate the first time, right before COVID, and doing this thing. And he, he's right, we were stonewalled, we couldn't see any of the figures, we couldn't make any kind of decisions, but yet, Chermak did, by the way, balance the budget back then. But here's the thing, when he asked me, I was reluctant to do this again. And again, I'm here a volunteer, I have so many things, so many irons in the fire. Don't ever, don't ever retire, because, believe me, you get busier. That's the truth. But anyway, all these things are standing, and there's things that I, I didn't even want to get involved in this. But, you know, it's important, it's real important, so I said, "Okay, we'll do it." It just happened that my wife and I, right after I told him yes, we went into our grocery store, our local Quinn's, and we were in the veggie section. When we were in there, you know, what they do when things start to get old, they put them on the side and they drop them by 85%. I seen this elderly lady, and she's sitting there comparing two different of the same items, and she's looking at them, she's got this sad look in her face. I don't know what you guys believe, but I believe the man upstairs sometimes talks to us. I looked at her and I says, "You know, I was fortunate to grow up with a 401K. I don't live, I'm not a millionaire or anything, but I live comfortable." But this poor lady is deciding which rotten food she can put on her shelf for her people and, and later eat it. And my heart just broke inside, and I hope to God that you guys think of that, because there are many seniors and businesses. My God, 85% of the trucking industry have gone under in this past week, I just heard. So please, consider getting together with us all. Again, I'm begging you to get together with all of us, let's do it together.
Suzanne Green, I'm Lackawanna County President, Benton Township, Pennsylvania. I am here to speak about some of the items on the agenda. Right now, I did see that the agenda includes a debt policy. I did not see a copy of that available to the public. Is there a debt policy available to the public?
It's everything is posted online.
Funding balance policy, I did not see a copy of that available to the public. I would like a copy of that. It's not here available for the public to read it. I think that the public needs to be aware of these items prior to the meeting, there's not a copy outside for me to take a look at it right now. I understand you just said it was posted online, but it is not available to the public outside the door here for a copy, for us to read right now. So therefore, I'm asking that those agenda items be tabled till the next one, so that the public has time to review and comment. Next item that I'd like to speak on is the budget itself. I did notice that there's an increase in mills to the arts and culture from the 2024 level of 1 mill to 1.25 mills in the 2025 budget. I'm asking that that continue to go to the 2024 level, so that, that some of the savings can actually help fund the Penn State Extension, as they are asking, I think it's a very reasonable request, and it's something that is actually used by our community. So I'm asking that that request by Penn State Extension be considered and approved and included in the budget. Also, a few weeks ago, I did ask for how this increase in tax rate from up to 33% increase will impact the community, and whether an analysis has been done on the impact for our community, especially our senior citizens, the folks who are on fixed incomes. So I'm wondering if that review or analysis has been completed, and if so, where is it so that the public can review it? We would like to know what the impact for our community is. You can see how we all feel about it. I want to know what you folks have found when you did your analysis on the impact for our community. Financial statements from 2023. I've been informed by someone that the 2023 financial statements have not been completed. I want to know why financial statements from 2023 have not been completed, and when the completion date will be. That's one thing that I think all of us should be concerned with, that there should be some accountability for financial statements to be reviewed prior to, it's 2023, we're not talking about actuals from '24, we're talking about '23, not even completed yet. Colts, the increase in Colts on the budget, 2025 budget, it goes from $1 million in the 2024 budget to 2.27 million in the '25 budget with no explanation at all. The actual this year for '24 is listed as 1.9 million. So what's the increase about? Why was it budgeted at 1 million in '24 and now 2.27 in '25? We need an explanation for that. The decrease in mills, okay, got that part. I think that I've covered most of the topics, but I do think that it's great that you guys are listening to the public. I do appreciate that very much, and I do consider that we are part of the team, that we are in partnership, that it's not just speaking at you or you speaking at us, that we work together, and I do appreciate that, and I do speak with every one of you, and I do appreciate that very much, and your staff too. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address agenda items only? Anyone else like to address agenda items only?
Kevin Herrick, Olive and Borough. You know, there comes a point in time to where people start getting disgusted when there's no accountability. I spend a good portion of my week in the Lackawanna County prison. I watch some of the people in there that are in there for the wrong probation. They go in there, they get high, they get urinalysis, they get put back in jail. Sometimes they linger in there for a year because somebody doesn't want to sign a piece of paper for them to get out or go to a rehab. I see guys sitting there that are waiting six months. I'm not addressing this for the present board. I'm just talking about accountability.
No, what I'm saying, I just, I don't want to interrupt you, but this has to be related to the agenda items. There will be a public comment period at the end of the meeting where you can address anything related to the county, but this part at the beginning is specifically for anything on the agenda.
Okay. I will bring it in again in the meeting.
All right, thank you. Would anyone like to address any of the agenda items?
Good morning, Commissioners. I understand you're sick. I hope you feel better, Commissioner Gahan. Most of the questions that were, I wanted to ask, have already been asked, so I'm not sure how you're going to answer them since you weren't here. So maybe Gary or Chris Chermack could address why we got here and why these questions that everybody asked here had happened, because it did go up. I mean, I'm looking at these budgets. I remember standing here in 2022, asking, "Why are we taking out a loan for $15 million when we have a supposed budget revenue of 25 million?" And that was at the end of the year. And I was told just because, I guess. Didn't make any sense to me. And the audits, they needed to be done, so why weren't they done? Many questions, like I said, that they already asked. I don't want to duplicate and take your time because I know you want to get out of here, but those are two of the things that I didn't hear about. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on agenda items only?
Frank Seraphini from Musick. First, I would like to thank the Commissioners for signing my Watcher Papers. It was a real great experience. I was at the Musick Community Center, and I was able to observe three wards, and most of the people who came in to vote certainly can't afford a 33% increase. But I think I have a great idea, and that is that if you were to assess the political ads, you would pay this budget off in about 105 minutes because it was out of control. And I know more about abortion now than I ever wanted to know. But I have to say that the bankruptcy that occurred in Philadelphia under Governor Rendell, and he was the mayor at the time, was not solved by a tax increase. It was solved by David Cohen, an attorney for Rendell, going to the politicians at the time and asking the state and federal politicians to cover their bankruptcy. Because what will happen now, because most of the people work in warehouses and make 50, 60,000 a year, they're not able to make these payments for their home and their mortgage. So they will essentially be homeless, and about the only thing they'll be able to afford is a tent. But there is a way to file bankruptcy. Why let the people file bankruptcy individually? Let Lackawanna County go bankrupt, and then see what the politicians do for you. You have Cartwright and Casey, who's a resident, who are on, I guess they're lame duck, I don't know, but I'm sure there's something they could do for their hometown. And right now, it's critical for the people that I spoke to at the Musick Community Center that something be done, and I'm sure you're trying. I'm sure it's not an easy project. But the problem I have is that the assumption with politicians, and this happens in the state also, is that in a four-year term, raise the taxes as high as you can, it happened in Musick, as high as you can the first year, because in four years, everybody will forget it, and we'll have tons of money to spend to make them think that they're living in a nice little area. But I drive the streets, they suck. They're terrible. I drive, I go around, no lights. You walk through Scranton, you think you're in a ghost town. It's not like we're paying taxes to live in a metropolis like you have in other areas. We're living in a slum. This Lackawanna County is turning into a garbage dump, and it's horrible. And I hope there's something you can do about it. But we have to balance the budget and not on the backs of the taxpayers. And when you ran for office, I'm sure you had an idea that Notary Annie and Dominic destroyed the budget spending, and I would have hoped that you might have had some inkling as to how to handle this. And hiring an accounting firm to review the budget and them coming back and saying, "Well, the only answer is raise taxes 33%." I mean, anybody in this room could have told you, "That's a good answer because that'll definitely balance the budget." But if there's anything possible that you feel you can cut or do to help the taxpayers, because in Musick, I know we have a new warehouse coming in, a million square foot, 1,900 new vehicles. It's going to be tough on the streets. We have a charter school coming in, and you know what happens with the charter school? You end up getting the taxpayers, putting a burden on the taxpayers. So I wish there's something. I ran out of ideas only because bankruptcy, to me, is the easiest form of getting out of it. And David Cohen works for Comcast. If you could possibly contact him and ask him how we managed to get Philadelphia out of their deficit, which was worse than you've got, I think that would behoove the taxpayers as an effort in the right direction. But I thank you very much. I know it's not easy, and it's not going to be easy from this point on, and trying other sources of income is going to be even more difficult. But if there's anything that you could possibly do to help the people out, they were pathetic yesterday coming into the polls, and the number one thing on their mind wasn't Harris and Trump, it was 33% tax increase. And I think that swayed most of their vote, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on agenda items only? Okay. The first thing we have for the business portion of the meeting is a proclamation declaring November 6, 2024, to be Age Friendly Communities Day in Lackawanna County. And I'm going to read that proclamation into the record, and then I'll ask if our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Sarah McDonald, will get up to say a few words. Whereas in the United States, the population of people age 62 and over is expected to grow from 35 million in the year 2000 to 88.5 million by 2050, taking the total share of 65-plus from 12% to 20% of the total population. And whereas Lackawanna County is currently home to over 59,000 residents over the ages 62, accounting for 27.4% of our population, research shows that older Americans overwhelmingly want to remain in their homes and communities as they age, with access to quality health care, long-term services, and affordable housing being essential. And whereas the World Health Organization has developed a global network of age-friendly cities and communities to encourage and promote public policies to increase the number of cities and communities that support healthy aging. And whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Aging led the change to develop the Aging Our Way Pennsylvania Plan, following an executive order signed by Governor Josh Shapiro in May 2023 in Lackawanna County. And the members of the Age Friendly Lackawanna Coalition believe that no single entity can address the holistic needs of the older adult population in our community. And whereas, the County of Lackawanna hereby supports initiatives and opportunities to engage in the AARP and WHO Age Friendly Cities and Communities Network, and will promote and expand age-friendly policies and programs throughout Lackawanna County. Now, therefore, we, Bill Gahan, Matt McGloin, and Chris Chermack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim and recognize November 6, 2024, as Age Friendly Communities Day in Lackawanna County. And here to speak on that is our Director, Sarah McDonald.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are here today as part of the Age Friendly Collaborative. We're excited to announce that we will be applying to join the AARP network of age-friendly states and communities. Today, I am joined by a representative from the Pennsylvania Department of Aging, along with local organizations representing our Age Friendly Collaborative, including Meals on Wheels, the Moses Taylor Foundation, The United Way of Lackawanna, Wayne, and Pike Counties, and the Wright Center. This commitment reflects our dedication to making Lackawanna County an inclusive, equitable, and supportive place where residents of all ages, especially older adults, can live, work, and prosper. Joining the AARP network aligns with our broader goals to enhance the quality of life for all residents, encourage lifelong civic participation, and promote safe, walkable neighborhoods and accessible services. We are excited to take this step toward building a more age-friendly future, and we look forward to learning from other network members and contributing to this important movement. I'd like to introduce quickly Jesse Pierce, the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Council on Aging, to give a few remarks.
Sure, thank you very much.
Good morning. Thank you, Sarah. I have, like Sarah said, I'm the Executive Director of the PA Council on Aging. I work in Harrisburg. I came in from Harrisburg this morning. I know I'm on Secretary of Aging Jason Kavulich's home turf, so those are big shoes to fill, and I'll be brief. When we at the state developed the Aging Our Way PA Plan, we developed it to be implemented over the course of a decade, and we knew that we were going to have to get creative. There's some significant demographic changes that are coming and have already started. And we're excited to get creative in terms of our partnerships and how we support our older Pennsylvanians and support the livability of our communities across Pennsylvania at every stage of life. And the age-friendly movement, that's what it's all about. And I also just want to say, we know that there's a lot of partnerships that we need to make across agencies, so with like the Department of Health, for example, the Department of Transportation. We're working more closely with those agencies than we ever have, and we're going to have to develop robust state-local partnerships too. And I just want to thank the Commissioners for being on the forefront, as always, of looking to build age-friendly communities and committing to supporting older Lackawanna County residents. I want to thank Area Agency on Aging Director Sarah McDonald for all of her work, and I want to thank all the members of the Coalition for positioning Lackawanna County to look forward to the future and get these important things done. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. And if you'd like to come up for a quick photo with the proclamation, that'd be great. Okay, thank you. The first ordinance today is ordinance 24-0265.
The first reading of ordinance 295. It's an ordinance of the County of Lackawanna in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania fixing the tax rate and enacting the budget for the year 2025. An appropriate, specific sum is estimated to be required for specific purposes of the county government here and after, so forth during the current fiscal year. Be it ordained and enacted, and it is hereby resolved and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, Section 1. That the tax be the same and that tax be and the same is hereby levied on all property within the said county subject to taxation for county purposes for the fiscal year 2025 as follows. Tax rate for the general county purposes, the sum of 69.67 mils on each dollar assessed valuation, or the sum 696.7 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation for debt purposes, the sum of 15.99 mils on each dollar assessed valuation, or the sum of 159.9 cents on each of the $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of the county library system, the sum of 3.07 mils on each dollar assessed the valuation of the sum, or 30.70 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of Cultural and Education Fund, the sum of 1.25 mils, or the sum of 12.5 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. The total mileage for all purposes is the sum of 89.98 mils. Section 2, all prior ordinances or resolutions or parts thereof inconsistent herewith are repealed. Mr. Chairman, this is the first reading. He won't be taking a vote among us today. But here to speak upon that is their Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Dave Bolzoni.
Dave.
Good morning, gentlemen. I believe there's been quite a bit said about the budget and certainly some good points, and I think all three Commissioners have brought some good ideas to the table. I would like to say that it's been a very difficult process. None of what we're doing is anything that hasn't been discussed previously, and certainly there are challenges in the construction of this budget, primarily because of neglect in prior years. And by neglect, it's mainly deferral, deferral of costs, and also costs that have become more significant in recent years that really have to be addressed. And I think the departmental budget hearings were absolutely critical in that each department shared the rationale for their own budgets. All of that information was shared with the Commissioners to allow the Commissioners, and also the Revenue and Finance Department, to be able to prioritize what was absolutely necessary. Initially, just based on the first review of the budget, we were able to reduce the expenditures by about 8 million. But again, as I had pointed out previously, not only to this board, but to prior boards, the challenge that we had was really the reliance on one-time revenue sources, whether they were current-year revenue sources that were only available at one time, or a reduction in the fund balance. And not being able to make up those revenue sources within the current fiscal year really creates problems, and that's really why we're where we are right now in the budget process. So I think it's important to point all of that out, and certainly, it's been a challenging process for all.
I have a few questions for you, Mr. Bolzoni. So when you just said in your statement that one of the reasons why the county is in this position is because of the use of one-time revenue sources, give us an example of a one-time revenue source.
Well, I did. The use of the fund balance. Now, you know, if you really look at best practices, the fund balance really should not be used just to cover operational expenses. I mean, that's no secret. The rating agency has been citing that for years, and yet, the fund balance was really used as a lever in order to balance the budget. That shouldn't be the case. We used one-time revenue sources when I arrived. You know, we used some healthcare surplus dollars, we sold tax liens. Even in this year, you know, we're looking at doing debt service reduction. We looked at doing debt service reduction financing as well. And there's nothing wrong with one-time revenue sources. If you could make up whatever that number is in the subsequent fiscal year, either through revenue increases or expense reductions, but basically, if you're doing it without a plan, then all it's going to do is compound. And I pointed this out before. So in 2022, there was a $4 million
Security interest in and lean and charge on the taxes and other revenues to be received by the county during the period when the notes are outstanding. The county hereby accepts the proposal of the purchaser for the purchase and arrangement of the private placement of the notes, subject to and in accordance with the term, terms and conditions of this ordinance and the proposal. The sale of the notes shall be for aggregate, aggregate purchase price of not less than the aggregate amount of the notes issued by the county plus accrued interest and then, if any, from the date of the notes to the date of the delivery thereof. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized and powered directed and to contract with the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, as the paying agent. Chairman or any other commissioner of the board, the chief of staff or deputy chief of staff of the county and all other proper officers of the county are hereby authorized jointly and severally to do any and all other things necessary to effectuate the issuance, execution, delivery and the sale of the notes duly enacted and ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania in lawful regular session duly assembled. This is the first reading, commissioners. You will not take a vote on this until two weeks from now. Here to speak upon that is also, once again, CFO Bolzoni and Attorney Brian Kozlansky.
Gentlemen, this effort to secure cash flow funding for fiscal year 2025 is somewhat of a departure from tax and revenue anticipation note issues. Of the five proposals we received for the 2024 note, which met county criteria, only one was sub 5%, and that was at 4.86%. The difficulty inherent in the process is that financial challenges and debt downgrades do not make for a very competitive process. Based on a review of proposals that have been received throughout the Commonwealth, and this information came from our financial advisor, the current range is between 4.6 and 4.85% with a higher rate associated with more challenging underlying financial information, which of course is, is us. The alternative, which we reviewed very closely, is a capital markets transaction, which is specifically a private placement of the debt with an investor group. The county will use Essex Securities, and they're a specialist in more financially challenged issues, and they'll place the debt privately with Vanguard. The range of yields will be between, will be between 3.6 and 4% and will be fixed prior to closing, including costs. So we expect a fairly significant amount of savings, only because unlike on the banking side, there's a lot of interest or a lot of appetite for publicly issued debt transactions in the investor community. There's just not a sufficient amount of debt that can be invested in right now, so it's compressed the, the yields. The county will also separate the investment of the note proceeds in a higher yielding account to secure whatever interest arbitrage might be available. Therefore, any compression in rate that we can achieve would be advantageous, which may allow us to earn interest on that balance of those funds that may not be used. So the plan is, and of course, we have a significant need for cash flow funding right now because our fund balance is somewhat weak and also has been cited as an issue by the rating agency relative to use. So we'll probably use quite a bit of that money within the first two months of the year. Whatever we don't use, we'll arbitrage it and try and at least secure some interest to help offset the interest cost on the debt.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Resolution 24 dash 0273.
This is approving the current payables, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund number is 377-655-378065, inclusive totaling $2,920,739.53. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $11,186,804.77. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 6, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24 dash 0268.
This is entering into an agreement with Debtbook. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Debtbook to automate the repository for debt-related information. Agreement to cost $15,000 annually over a three-year contract period. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 6, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our CFO, Mr. Bolzoni.
Commissioner, Debtbook is an automated repository for all information related to the county debt profile. This service will digitize all information related to county debt. Presently, payment information is tracked manually using a paper-based methodology. Information regarding past issues is not available in a single location and without convenient access. Having the ability to update debt information readily is especially important for the transition to the single point paying agent concept, which will take effect in 2025, for all county management responsibilities. In addition to payments, the database will track active and historical issues with refunding data and disclosure information. The program costs $15,000 for the first year with 3% increases in years two and three. Important to note, Debtbook is a member of the Omnia Purchasing Cooperative, in which the county participates, and the product is also very singular in its construction and would be difficult to recreate either internally or with another vendor. And I'd strongly recommend its approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni? I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24 dash 0269.
This is adopting an updated fund balance policy, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby adopt a fund balance policy in which the County of Lackawanna has determined that it is in the best interest of the county government and thereby for, thereby in the best interest of the county government's constituents to establish a fund balance policy. Whereas the county hereby establishes a policy, the county's general fund accumulated fund balance as reflected in the county's financial audit on December 31st of any year should be a minimum and be equal to 12% of the total annual general fund revenue reflected in the annual audit for the, for the year that ended. Now therefore, be it resolved, further resolved, the fund balance policy adopted on November 4th, 2015 is hereby abolished. In the event that the county's, county government's general fund accumulated fund balance were to fall below the minimum amount established above, the county is committed to increasing revenue sources and reducing expenditures for and from the general fund. The fund balance policy should ensure the county maintains an adequate fund balance to ensure capacity sufficient to provide cash flow for daily financial needs and to provide adequate reserves to offset significant economic downturns or revenue shortfalls. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 6, 2024. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here's CFO Bolzoni.
Commissioner, so we have two policies that we're considering today. Fund balance policy is the first. I would like to read one sentence that was in the Standard and Poor's prior rating of the county's debt, because I think it's pertinent relative to both policies, and then I'll talk about the fund balance policy. Under vulnerable financial policies and practices, and this is Standard and Poor's, we view the county's management score as weak with vulnerable financial policies and practices under our FMA methodology, indicating our view that management lacks policies in many of the key areas we consider most critical to supporting credit quality. That's really the reason why we're considering these policies this morning. It's certainly going to be a requirement if we're seeking to improve our debt rating, and it really is just what would be considered a best financial practice anyway. Under the fund balance policy, the purpose of maintaining an adequate fund balance policy is to mitigate current and future risks associated with funding availability. The fund balance policy establishes minimum levels for designated funds to ensure stable service delivery, meet future needs and protect against financial instability. A percentage of operating revenue is the typical determinant of a fund balance. The county previously adopted a fund balance policy in 2015 using a 5% figure associated with operating revenues. That's inadequate, that was cited as being inadequate in the rating. This policy recommends a 12% measure, and I'm recommending 12% because the rating agency generally looks at 15% as meeting their criteria, although recommended policy standards usually range between 10 and 15% of operating revenues. The inappropriate use of the fund's balance to offset budget deficiencies was a principal reason for the downgrades in the county debt rating. And again, it's that domino effect. So we're using the fund balance to, as a one-time revenue to offset budgetary deficiencies, but it's also led to a downgrade in the county's debt rating. And I will point out that having two debt downgrades within a year is very significant. And I know that the rating agencies, if we don't take action and address some of these deficiencies, we will be subject to another downgrade. That's not a bridge we want to cross, commissioners.
Thank you. Any questions on this from Mr. Bolzoni? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, on the question, these are the, the Debtbook that we just voted on, the fund balance policy, and next, the debt management policy. These are the initiatives that Commissioner McGoyne and I, upon taking office, we promised people that we were going to turn the financial condition of this county around. Obviously, these aren't the sexiest things to talk about and vote on, and it probably doesn't grab everyone's attention like other things do. But as Mr. Bolzoni said, when we took office, one of the most striking comments in the report from our debt rating agency, Standard and Poor's, was that the county really lacks strong financial management, and there were several weaknesses that were identified. This legislation and the next one that we'll vote on, and the Debtbook, they begin the process of rectifying these issues. The fund balance policy is going to promote financial stability and resilience. As Mr. Bolzoni mentioned, the fund balance policy establishes a target level of reserve funds, ensuring that the county has a financial cushion for unexpected expenses or revenue shortfalls. And this stability is essential to maintaining public services even in times of economic downturns or in times of emergencies. So it really provides the county with a framework for setting long-term financial goals. We'll talk a minute, we'll talk in a minute about the debt management policy, but all of these policies that we have put forth today and that we're voting on, they demonstrate our administration's commitment to fiscal responsibility and prudent financial stewardship. And it's another example of our proactive approach to governance rather than reacting to issues only when they arise. So this long-term outlook will help position the county in the future as a model of good governance and effective public administration. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24 dash 0270.
This is adopting the debt, debt management policy, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby adopt the debt management policy to set forth the parameters of issuing debt and managing outstanding debt. The policy provides guidance to the Board of Commissioners regarding the timing and purposes for which debt may be issued, types and amounts of permissible debt, methods of sale that may be used and structural features that may be incorporated. The debt policy should recognize a binding commitment to full and timely repayment of all debt as an intricacy requirement, Mr. Bolzoni's big word, sorry, for entry into the capital markets. Adherence to the debt policy helps to ensure the government maintains a sound debt position and that credit quality is protected. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 6, 2024. Mr. Bolzoni.
Commissioners, according to the Government Finance Officers Association, debt management policies are written guidelines that guide the process of debt evaluation and debt issuance practices of governments, including the issuance process, management of a debt portfolio, adherence to various laws and regulations relative to debt, federal tax compliance and compliance with most post-issuance continuing disclosure requirements. None of that we've necessarily addressed formally to this point. A debt management policy should improve the quality of decisions, articulate policy goals, provide guidelines for the structure of debt issuance and demonstrate a commitment to long-term capital and financial planning. Adherence to a debt management policy is a signal to the rating agencies, lenders and investors that the government is well-managed and therefore is likely to meet its debt obligations in a timely manner. That being a critical point, the perception of risk, not that government debt necessarily comes with a risk, but it's the perception of risk that really drives your rating and drives your, drives the interest in your debt profile, not only in the capital markets but by area banks. This policy is especially critical for the county following two rating downgrades in less than one year, which I had just mentioned. The lack of a debt management policy was cited by the rating agency, Standard and Poor's, as a significant managerial weakness, which I read to you from their report, and I thought it was important really to understand what the underlying purpose is of putting these policies in place. So I'd recommend, strongly recommend the approval of this as well.
Thank you. Any questions on this from Mr. Bolzoni?
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
All those in, I'm sorry, on the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Resolution 24 dash 0271.
This is ratifying the CDBG modifications and revisions, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify the submissions of modifications and revisions for the following community development block grant programs to the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development. For federal fiscal year 2021 Jessup Borough, the modification will delete the Jessup Borough Housing Rehabilitation Line item and create the Public Community Facilities line item for Jessup Borough Bank Building ADA Elevator Construction Project with the following funding: $82,509 transferred from the Single Unit Residential Housing Rehabilitation Line item. For federal fiscal year 2022 Jessup Borough, the modification will delete the Jessup Borough Housing Rehabilitation Line item and create the Public Community Facilities line item for the Jessup Borough Bank Building ADA Elevator Construction Project with the following funding: $82,255 transferred from the Single Unit Residential Housing Rehabilitation Line item. Old Forge Borough, modification will delete the Old Forge Borough Housing Rehabilitation Line item and create the Public Community Facilities line item for the Old Forge Senior Center Kitchen and HVAC project with the following funding: $118,553 transferred from the Single Unit Residential Housing Rehabilitation Line item. Be it further resolved, the county has complied with the terms of Pennsylvania Act 179 and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned revisions. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 6, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristin Magnata.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Commissioners. As was stated, this, this is for the CDBG program, the Community Development Block Grant Program that flows, just for awareness, from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to the Pennsylvania DCD Department of Community and Economic Development, and then those funds flow to us, just for educational purposes. The passage of two modifications are needed to transfer funds from one project to another to continue with eligible spending of CDBG funds in both Jessup and Old Forge. This resolution will help facilitate and fund these two eligible projects and activities. The cost is 100% covered by CDBG funds. There's no cost to the county at all. This is important, this passage, because of the due date of completion of these projects, which was by the end of May of 2025. The benefit to Lackawanna County residents in both Jessup and Old Forge is to have these projects completed in the municipalities in a timely manner so they get, and are able to maintain these funds for these projects. As was stated, both of these projects were originally listed as housing rehab and the Jessup, in for Jessup, it will now be for a Borough Bank Building ADA Elevator, and in Old Forge, it would be for a Senior Center Kitchen and HVAC program. So we ask for your passage of these community projects at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnata? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24 dash 0272.
This is authorizing the filing of applications with the statewide local share assessment account grant program. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorize the submission of grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development through the statewide local share assessment account grant program as detailed. Number one, Lackawanna County Trail Maintenance Project, $101,177 for the purchase of equipment and for collaborative trail and park maintenance. Lackawanna County Covington Park ADA Walkway and Improvements, $114,433 for design and construction to implement an ADA walkway and additional improvements. Number three, Lackawanna County Coal Mine Tour Improvements, $121,848 needed for renovations and updates. Lackawanna County Merle Sernoski Field Playground ADA Project, $97,298. Project to correct play, field drainage, update the upper playground and provide ADA accessibility. Lackawanna County Arts and Cultural Lenape Mural Project, $96,090. It's a collaborative mural project with the Lenape Tribe. Lackawanna County Trolley Museum, enhancing the legacy, $66,449. It's a project to provide educational and interactive media to update the trolley museum. In the Lackawanna Blind Association, $500,000 for demolition of and reconstruction of the building on the current site to provide additional capacity to serve visually impaired. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to the statewide local share assessment account grants, and the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize the submission of these applications to the statewide local share assessment account grant program on behalf of the above-named projects. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 6, 2024. Here to speak upon that, once again, is Director Magnata.
Thank you.
Thank you. LSA, as you know, we've stood in front of you three different times for LSA Monroe, which is the local share account, fundings for Monroe that we receive. This is actually different. This is LSA statewide. This was created during COVID from online gaming. This is much more competitive, but it is a higher cost. These projects can range anywhere from $25,000 all the way up to a million. And so being statewide, the competition is much greater. The closing, the deadline for closure is November 30th, so we still have some time to go, other than the seven that we have presented today. And then we will find out mid to late next year of 2025, the award winners for this. We put in seven thus far, six being for the county and one being for Lackawanna County Blind Association, but again, we are expecting many more applications than this. The only cost to the county is the $100 application fees per application, and anyone that is not from the county that uses us as a pass-through, they have to pay for their own application fee. Again, we're likely to see many more before the 30th, but these decisions are really important in these projects, again, are equally as important as the LSA Monroe projects.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Are there any questions for Director Magnata? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24 dash 0262.
These are appointments to the Lackawanna County Women's Commission. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby make the following reappointments to the Lackawanna County Women's Commission. It's a three-year term commencing immediately and expiring on December 31st, 2027. Judy Cosgrove of Dunmore, Pennsylvania, Amy Wexler of Scranton, Pennsylvania, Bernadette Leprey of Carbonell, Pennsylvania, Kelly Laird of Dunmore, Mary Ann Laporta of North Abington Township, Donna Barbetti of Scranton, Joanne Arduino of Dunmore, Sarah Cruz of Scranton, Lori Caden of Dunmore, Jennifer Redwillitz of Dixon City, Robin Madeiros of Clark Summit, and Amy Leister of Roaringbrook. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 6, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, on the question, this commission has been in place for a number of years. We're just simply re-establishing it to help ensure that the needs, the voices and the contributions of women in Lackawanna County are heard and are valued. There are several other vacancies on this committee. I think there's 27 total spots, if I'm not mistaken. So if there are any women out there in Lackawanna County who want to make a contribution and serve on this committee, just please submit your letters of interest and your resume on the county website. You can find the information under Boards, Authorities and Commissions, and we'd be happy to have anyone who is interested in, in serving. And I know in the past, when this committee was active, they did some really great projects. So there's, there's a lot to offer. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is approved. Resolution 24 dash 0264.
These are appointments to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Workforce Development Board with the terms to commence November 1st, 2024 and continue through October 31st, 2027. Ms. Amy Leister, the Vice President of Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, Jim Wanzek, the Executive Director of the Agency for Community Empowerment of NEPA. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 6, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24 dash 0263.
This is an appointment to the Disability Action Committee. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby make the following appointment to the Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee. Ms. Nicole Backman of Scranton, Pennsylvania, to fill the unexpired term and commence immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 6, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Commissioners, Bob Wallace, Scranton. I brought up about revoking the University of Scranton's tax exempt status because they violated the rule of God. The only thing that should be exempt is the chapel. Brought up cut the DA's staff, the money going in there, it's just being wasted. What I've heard here today, the reverse to tax exempt for the hospital, alls I heard here today is how much money this, that, and the other, but I didn't hear one cut. Now one single cut from Bolzoni or anybody else, how we become more efficient. You gotta cut expenses. You can't just keep making the people pay, 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 and think there's a well there. There isn't. It's gonna go dry. You haven't mentioned one thing here in your budget proposal or anything, how you intend to cut expenses. Alls I've heard is how much more money we're gonna spend on this, that, and the other, and not one single cut. The problem I see here is that you've never ran a business, so you won't know what a business is about and what you do to survive. Here it's that you could just take on, hammer the taxpayers, make them pay no matter what the story is. Well, as our learned solicitor quoted before, during this year when it was raised, there are numerous flaws to this budget right now, and legally, they can be challenged. Legally, no ifs, ands, or buts. Even though it's been adjudicated once before, there's always another doorway into it, and that doorway is open right now. I think this budget should have been tabled, reevaluated intelligently and practically. It has not been done that way. And I just don't see where we can survive in this community, what's going on here, with all the, we're gonna get this debt relief, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. I didn't hear one word how we're gonna save a dime, not one dime. It's all about money, how we're gonna get all this other stuff that's gonna educate everybody on how to do it, but not how to save a dime. And that's where we gotta start here. We went through a lot in the last couple weeks, last couple months, and I will say this, I'm glad there was a turnaround in our country. I couldn't have been happier to know that Lake and Riley and all the young women that were brutally murdered, brutally raped on Harris's watch are now applauding. were brutally murdered, brutally raped on Harris's watch are now applauding that a phony was kicked out. And America's got a chance now to recover where we've been left. Joe Biden, a hero? No, he was a coward. He walked away from everybody. There was none he had to offer. And I'm gonna do everything in my power to get a petition to get rid of Biden Street and get his name off the interstate highway signs. Because he doesn't deserve to be there. He destroyed a country and destroyed our credibility and our character with him and his vice president. And I couldn't be happier it changed. And I will say that we need to make the difference that we're going here, but I will say this very clearly, and I'm gonna direct this, Mr. Gahan, Mr. McGloin, Gary Rudders, and to the mayor, in the event Donald Trump decides to come back to this community, I will do everything in my power to make sure that you guys and the mayor are not invited, because you ignored anybody that came to this community on behalf of all the people. You just wanted to play a political game and ignored it. And I'll make sure that happens, that the new administration coming in will understand the treatment that he received. It wasn't neutral. You didn't represent all the people, you just represented your political cronies. And I couldn't have been happier they all got their asses kicked. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Commissioner, just one thing. Bob, with regard to the tax exempts, the County Assessment Office is currently working with the city of Scranton in doing a comprehensive review of all the tax exempts in the city of Scranton. So that may result in some findings.
Yeah, thank you, sir. You can come up.
First off, again, Carlin Preate, I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Gons invoking my name when we had a meeting with CFO, yes. Responsible commission, county activity should have been increasing taxes at least to the rate of inflation about 3% or 4% over the last four years. The only time we did that was in 2024, this past year. But if we did increase the taxes at 3% or 4%, the tax increase this year would not have been 33%. It would have only been 15% or 14% or 15%. So again, I just wanted to clarify that. I want to bring up a couple other points. I didn't have a chance to look at some cost-cutting measures in some of the departments. I don't want to get into that. But I do want to indicate here that one of the things that we need to do is we need to look at, how do we make government more efficient? We spent a lot of money on technology. We spent a lot, your IT budgets are out of sight. Why don't we look at consolidation of row offices? Oh, it's in the charter. I know that, but we should look at the charter. Consolidation of row offices, just like every other counties there, where you go to one office, you pay your taxes, you file your wills, and we don't need, we don't need all the different row offices. And we'd have to go to various different locations. We don't need that. It's all on computer. You go right up to the window, just like in any other counties, and you, oh, what are you doing? You're filing a will? Okay, here. Oh, you're paying your taxes? Okay, you go right on the computer. That's what happens. We don't need all of these separate departments going to separate, different locations. The other question is, why do we need 10 district justices? 10. We probably could get away with 6. Okay, how much are we saving? But it's, you know, it's the way the county looks at doing business. How are we doing business more efficiently? Prison, we spent $34 million on the prison. Well, wait a minute. And I know it's a big expense, and there's overtime, and this, that, and the other. But should we look at privatization? Privatization of the prison? I don't know if it works, but we should have that studied. Or maybe privatization of the management? I don't know. Maybe we can save money. As I mentioned earlier, we have contracts of $25 million for contracted services. It doesn't get bid. But do we need all those contracted services? Or should we bid them? I love the resolutions that were passed by, about the funding, the general funding, and quite candidly, I have a list of best practices that the county should follow in terms of looking at its finances. You had a resolution today of approving accounts payable. Well, wait a minute. You know what? Why don't we have a list of what's the bank balances? What's the cash in the bank balances? What is the aging of our accounts payable? How much money have we collected? We should be getting regular reports from the Treasurer's Office and from some of the key department heads. I mentioned about delinquent taxes. Why don't we get reports from delinquent taxes on a regular basis, a quarterly basis? We need to have information. The county needs to be more transparent, which will help with the bond rating. But if everything is in secret, oh, you know, and you could tell all you want, and you say, well, wait a minute, if somebody wants to know, they can knock on the door. Well, these are open public meetings. The public has a right to know what's going on. Who's paying? Who do we owe money to? Who do, when we transfer money between funds, one of the problems that I saw in these budgets, we transfer money to these authorities without any proper resolution. I don't know if we're complying with the charter. All of a sudden, we transfer money to the Performing Arts Authority, this authority, it's not in the budget. And then they never repay us back. Folks, there is ways that we can save money, we can be more efficient, and I've only scratched the surface. I've only scratched the surface on best practices. And all I'm saying is, you know what? If we really wanted to help, we want to help you guys. But if you don't want to let us participate into this process, yeah, what are we doing here? You know, you're shoving everything down everybody's throat, and, okay, so, yeah, take it, you know, we're taking it on the chin, but people can't afford it. People cannot afford, we have to do business more efficiently and more effectively.
Tom Coyne, just have a few comments to round it up. I understand there's a reluctance to use the Recovery Act. I understand that you consider it a one-time payment. But I also understand that both of the commissioners who put forth this budget, put forth the argument that paying the minimum balance on a credit card gets you nowhere. That as you pay a minimum balance, the balance keeps rolling forward and increases, and something that takes you five years now takes you 20 years because that interest continually accruing. In the same principle, if you have a credit card balance of $8,000, and you get $2,000 from the IRS and it's a one-time payment, it's not unreasonable to take that $2,000 and apply at least some of it to that credit card debt to stop the rolling debt moving forward. I'm not saying taking everything from the Recovery Act funds. I'm saying at least take a look at it and see if there's some things in there that you can trim down a little bit, remove some of the funds to take away that principle, that credit card balance that's rolling forward that you say, don't pay the minimal. I think in avoiding even looking at it, you're avoiding the opportunity to use some of that funds to reduce the debt right up front before the taxes come in. And that only leaves more money in the reserve moving forward to grow for the city and the county. If it's 33% and you take a section of that money and put it in there, maybe you'll have a little bit more excess to go to all the increases that are necessary. So I'm not saying rip everything down. I'm saying at least take a look and see if there's something you can pull out of there to put at that debt. The last comment was when I had brought up my look at the Home Rule Charter. Counsel made a comment about me playing an attorney. I find that very offensive and demeaning. An informed citizen should look at legislation. I may not have access to LexisNexis and be able to take a look at all the legal proceedings and be aware of them. But when I look at a county document on there trying to be an informed citizen in his own government, sure, I make errors. And sure, I'll reference what the counsel had said in this meeting and review it and learn for myself, because I am not an attorney. But the snarky response back was intentionally demeaning and meant to belittle, and that is unprofessional behavior before this body. An informed citizen is not what we should be abusing as our government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Hodawan, it's Scranton. I want to mention something no one's mentioned yet, and it's to compliment the county's election board, its staff, and all your poll workers. I don't know about other voters, but I want to vote at 7:00 AM at Washington West Apartments. Long line, thoroughly painless process. Compare Lackawanna County to Luzerne County. They made ABC World News last night, and not for a good reason. So maybe someday you'll take pity on those people and show them how it should be done. I'm sure there were hiccups, but nothing like there was in Luzerne County. So, good job. I always look at download and printout audits, union contracts, and your budget proposal, all 98 pages of your workbook, which backs up the mileage increases that you propose. And I had a lot of questions, because I looked at individual lines, and some of them just, what, like page 21, human services, the wages, salary, staff, $1,335,924? And there's no breakout, there's no explanation. How is a citizen to look at that and say, well, how many people is this paying? Where do they work? What are their job titles? What do they do? You know, now, I asked the question, I was told, among other things, that this will all become clear when you get your digital budget book. And so I'm hoping that that's coming in the near future, and that that will be online so that the general public can access it. Because, as I said before, in a budget, the devil is in the details. And unless you want to explain 98 pages of a workbook, you know, it has to. Bill, you remember when you were in city council and the operational budget they had there, and that you would see a personnel breakdown of each department? You could see all the people, how many were authorized, what their salaries were from year to year. We have nothing like that in your county budget. We need to see that kind of level of information. Now, last week, there were two articles in the paper about healthcare costs. One was, "Expect higher costs next year for your healthcare benefits." And even though this was not intended for governments, it applies basically to everybody. And the other one on November 1, "How Taxpayers Are Helping Health Insurers Make Even Bigger Profits." "Local Governments Often Face Extra Fees When Employees Get Out-of-Net Work Medical Care." But some don't track the insurance charges or even know about them. I hope this does not apply to Lackawanna County. Maybe somebody should, you know, this is on November 1 in the Scranton Times, download this article and see, are we being, I don't want to say screwed over, because it's very unladylike, but, you know, this is something we ought to be looking at. And I agree with the prior speakers, especially Mr. Preate. You know, you have a lot of people in Lackawanna County that are brain trust, that offer good suggestions. Even if they're bad suggestions, it opens you up to discussion. One of my recommendations, however, is I'd like to see all the collective bargaining agreements for the county on the county's website. I did find a couple of them, but look at this, the prison, three documents, the police arbitration award through 2017 with annotations made by the computer, and two MOUs for each five-year period following. But there's not a current collective bargaining agreement for the prison that's been retyped. Why not? It's a problem that the city of Scranton has, you know, getting them to get these documents out. This is where you see that the prison employees have been getting 3% pay raises since 2012. This is where you could look at their healthcare benefits. So I recommend that you get those online. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katrina Bauer, and I'm from Jessup. I'm here today to hopefully get some clarification, considering some very important issues. Every time I've ever been up here, I've always spoken about life safety, emergency services being prepared. I found it pretty astonishing that I read an article dated on October 24 from a Wilkes-Barre news entity, PA homepage, stating that a Lackawanna County man was charged with rape, assault, and allegedly abuse in one of our, in this building. You guys know about this? CYS has been your top priority, one of your top priorities, but I keep saying to you all, finance is fine and dandy, but you could have all the money in the world, but if you lose a life, you really can't put a price tag on somebody's life, a child's mental health, from being abused. We have a provisional license. It looks like it's gonna expire on November 15 for CYS, and I don't know how something like this is gonna help. And I have not seen any safety protocols, procedures, anything implemented, to the best of my knowledge, or put into place, because it's basically not being put in our news for us. Good, bad, and ugly, we still need to know what this world is. We need to know the world is not kind. And if you could just close your eyes and just picture, did your children ever use the bathroom here? Did they ever come to see you at work? That type of stuff should not happen.
Ben, excuse me, but what you're insinuating, and let me just say this, the incident that you're talking about happened well before we ever took office.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
And Don, do you want to address this?
I should be able to have my time back.
You could, but what you're insinuating and bringing up our children and things, it's just totally disingenuous.
I'm not insinuating, and I'm not bringing up your children. I'm just bringing up the fact that you should put our children of Lackawanna County as a priority. And clearly, this is not a priority.
Sure it is.
Because why wouldn't it make our news, then? Why did it make Wilkes-Barre? Why are we finding out stuff from Wilkes-Barre? We're in Lackawanna County. I'm sorry that, like, the truth hurts you. You give us the truth every day, but when we give it back to you, it's like, back away. I spoke here three times, and every time I spoke here, I was decent, I was somewhat polite. I mean, I'm entitled to speak here at these meetings, to the best of my knowledge, and I'm pretty competent enough to speak. But I'm just trying to see where you are as our commissioner with our temporary provisional license is, because our next commissioner meeting is on the 20th, so it expires on the 15th. Do we have an extension? Are we working on this? I don't care about my taxes going up as long as my children are safe. I don't care. I really will go to work, do the same thing every day, and do what I have to do, but children in this county, this is a county building, children should be safe. End of story. CYS was your number one priority. You got rid of Bill Browning, but how many boards does he advise for that we probably are paying for consulting? I mean, let's get honest. These are children. I don't- I don't know what else to get through to you. This is important. It is so important to the fact that we have to read about it in another news and entity, not in Lackawanna County. And it was two weeks ago. It was posted. It was an article. No one knows about it, though. It's available. It's available for the public. It's been posted. It's been... there's an article on it for two weeks, but nothing in Lackawanna County. Nothing from our commissioners saying how we're going to keep our buildings safe. It's happened here. An alleged abuse involving a child.
In this building.
In this building.
Ma'am, excuse me, you can't speak out from the audience. Please. Not from the audience, you can't.
You could just come up after me and ask, but all I'm just asking for you is to please put the safety of our residents... Honestly, finances and everything is fine and dandy, but again, you don't have nothing if you lose somebody's life, and you can't put a price tag on the damage that that is going to do to somebody. Money isn't everything. Fix our finances. You're doing a great job at it. Give you a high five right now if you want it. Make this county safer, please, for our children. You guys live in it. It's simple. Do better.
Do you want to address this?
Yeah.
Yeah. Excuse me one second, sir. Attorney Frederickson, please, please address this.
Yeah, Commissioners, the incident in which you're speaking about, it occurred back around 2020, I believe. It was recently disclosed when the child was brought in for, you know, basically disclosing that there was abuse going on. It was continuing over a number of years. It was a boyfriend of the mother of the child. Allegedly, one incident did occur here during a... it was a visit at CYS. It was not a supervised visit, but it was a visit in the CYS facility because at the time, they did not have custody of the children. However, the court did not order supervised. It was just a visit, and supposedly, an incident occurred here in one of the bathrooms. CYS has have to become aware of it. They have revised their policies and are working on developing that. But they always take the... it's paramount to them, you know, the safety and welfare of the children, of course, at all times.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, Lynn Dobson from Peckville. And back on the issue of the budget here, I just wanted to clarify some of the things that have been said because we've heard them a number of times, and it just seems like it's not really clear on the ARPA funds. In no way were we ever insinuating that we should use those all the time to just cover the debt. What we're saying right now is that the debt, we understand the debts there, and hey, it's possible that 33% might be up there. I don't think so because men like Mr. Preate and, you know, such have looked at these figures, and they know them better than any of us because, I mean, he's done this for so long. He's a very brilliant man. But, you know, with these figures, what I understand about ARPA is that one point in time, these funds are going to be gone, and that's it. They disappear. So all we're saying is, on a temporary basis, why don't we put a stalemate on the 33%? And again, it's possible, maybe it's 16%? Maybe it is only 6.3%? We don't really know that because we haven't really drilled down into a lot of this stuff. And one of the things that I heard, and I'm not making any... pointing any figures or anything, but one of the things that I heard is that when you guys do meet with these department heads, they give you a summary. You don't know what that summary, you know, beyond the summary, what are those figures? You know, Mr. Preate brought up a lot of different figures, and what are those figures? What constitutes those figures? And what constitutes the increases in those figures? And I really think that we should all sit down, you know, you know, just to quote the good book, "There's safety in a multitude of counselors." We're offering a chance to take a whole bunch of counselors together from all spectrums. You know, some of the people are Democrats that met with us. Some of the people are Republicans. Again, we don't care about that. We care about this 33%. And if we can get it down, you guys are heroes. You just signed your next election for yourself. You know, Mr. Boas brought up some wonderful points and everything on different cuts and things like that. I almost thought he was looking at the budget himself because, you know, there are different things. And, you know, honestly, I didn't do much with the numbers, okay? We depended on them. They know that stuff better than we do. But I was looking at different aspects. Here's one, just for example, the pest control. I'm going to pick that one, all right? Because my father was a... he was a district manager of a pest control company. What they're paying for rodent control for their buildings, you guys are getting ripped off. Somebody's not doing their job. So my suggestion is this, why, you know, what should have been done is they should have got with these department heads and said, kids, we need to do a 25% cut across boards. You tell us how we do this, and do that behind closed doors, not in front of the public or anything, because you don't want to freak out your employees and get them all worried if they're going to lose their jobs and such. Figure out which ones are viable. I mean, that's kind of what we did. That's why we put the money back in for the 3%, and, you know, the cost increasing. You know, that was really unfair to take and pull one group just because you can hit them and take the money from them and leave all the unions alone. You know, and the union contracts are coming up too, by the way, and we need to talk about those. But all I'm saying, once again, is please, let's all get together and do this. Let's pick a time and a date where we can all do this and look at some of these numbers and see, why are they off? Because they are off. There are some anomalies in here that don't make any sense. And it's good to at least, and healthy to at least, look at them and decide. Thank you very much.
Ma'am.
Hi. My name is Amanda Segona. I live in Taylor. I'm here to talk about three things, ARPA, budget hearings, and OIFs. The ARPA dollars, I do have a concern with those just because they are required to be obligated by December 31st of this year. So when you mentioned earlier in the meeting, there's $5 million left that's unobligated. That's really concerning to me because we could lose it, so...
No, it can go into a specific line item, and we can have you talk to Kristi Magnota afterwards, but we can put that into a line item, and we're not going to lose it.
I think it would be great to have, like, some sort of public plan in terms of how the rest of the ARPA dollars are being used.
If we were here from the beginning, I would have done it that way, but we came in in January, so...
But even now, like, that $5 million, where's it going to go to? What's the plan with it? What's the justification for, you know, if we're going to use it or lose it? I feel like people's imaginations go, well, why don't we just use it in the budget? If we knew what it was going to be used for, it might help weigh that out. Because, yeah. The other thing is, I urge you to have a meeting where the public can hear for each department in the future. I know I said that before, but I... that's a huge concern of mine because, you know, we see this worksheet, but it's really not... there's no narrative to it. And so if there's no narrative to it, if there's no time to do that, at least you could, you know, bring them forth. And I really like how in the meetings, they have to defend each of their proposals to you. I think it would be great if they could defend their part of the budget as part of that. And not in like a defend way, but just, you know, explain what the department's... what's going on in the department? What are their initiatives? It could be a really positive thing, and it might be a really great way to... for people to get educated in the community. And then OIFs, specifically about OIFs, that's another one where that would be a great exercise. I'm really, I guess, I'm really concerned about this $10 million increase. There's no proposal. There's no nothing. And the lines that have been increased are things like operational expenses or indirect costs. And it's just like, what does that even mean? So to me, when I'm looking at that, I'm thinking, you know, what is going on there? And so my hope, what I'm really hoping, is that you all have a plan from the director there that you've reviewed, and you say, oh, okay, this $10 million increase, that makes a lot of sense. We can do that. And that's awesome if you have that. That's great that you feel comfort in that. But that hasn't been transmitted to the public. There's no transparency there. So when the public's looking at a $10 million increase to a department that's failing, they don't see any plan. And without a plan, there can't be any confidence. So you can't just say, trust us, you know, we have someone in there. She has a history of doing great things. Maybe she has a history, but where's her plan? Where's the written-down explanation? So this $10 million, I haven't done the... not, you know, I haven't done the math on it. But I'm sure that's a hefty percentage of that 33% increase, and so justifying that, I think would go a long way. So those are my three things. But I think just overall, what I'm trying to say is transparency would be excellent. And I know that seems like a after-the-fact kind of thing, like if we just stick our head down and make the budget and do everything right, that will be enough. But I think sometimes the appearance of doing well is almost just as important. Not for political reasons, getting reelected, whatever, don't really care about that, but like, you know, in order for people to have confidence in their government, that's really important. So that's everything I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you for answering so many questions, Commissioner Gahan. I think you did an excellent job, and I appreciate the time that you're taking here today, even though you're very... not feeling very well. So thank you so much. I was wondering about reassessment costs and where I could find those in the budget, if there are any. And they should be ongoing. And the question I had is, you're going to raise taxes by this amount, but they're supposed to be raised less 10%, I thought, the year before the reassessment goes through? So how are we...
The year of.
The year of? So when is reassessments not going through? Next year, it'll be 2026?
2026, yes.
Okay. So where would the cost be for that throughout the budget? Is that under the reassessor's office and contracted services?
I'm sorry. I believe that the cost is borne out in ARPA, right? The reassessment, not in this administration, but was paid for by the previous administration using the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
But it always draws funds out, though. So is it drawing funds?
Right, so it's drawn down through the ARPA funds, and that should be in the economic development line item in the budget, I believe.
I'm just going to write that down because I'm...
Yeah.
Economic development area?
It should be, yeah, if I'm correct.
Do we have any idea of what the costs are, Gary, so far, or no? Well, that was the initial payment to them, but then... Okay, so they'll be in the economic development when I'm looking for them, so then every meeting, I would have to ask for the cost then, or...
No, are you... I'm sorry. Are you talking about the cost of, like, the appeals or just the overall cost of conducting your reassessment?
The overall cost, first of all, is what we paid already, the 5.2, right?
Yeah.
But then ongoing with any appeals or anything?
That would be coming out back to reassessment. That would be coming out by 26 by...
That'll go in the tax assessor's office?
Yeah. And it'll be in the 26 by...
Sorry, I just want to make sure I know where it's at. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the time you took, and I look forward to seeing some of the items that everybody suggested implemented or discussed in the future. Have a good day. Hope you feel better.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Suzanne Green, Lackawanna County, Benton Township. I did look through the budget just now as Lorene was speaking, and I did not see that the costs are included in economic development, although there is contracted services in planning commission. Last year, 2024 budget amount in planning for contracted services was 893, and actual year-to-date, so, or I believe it's actually, an estimated amount for '24 is 188, and then budgeted 609. Is that for the reassessment? Is that the contracted services for reassessment?
No.
All right. I did get a chance to... Okay, so that's for something else? You can answer after. I have a couple more questions, sir. Okay. I did get a chance to take a look at the policy that you've just went through, which is for the fund balance, increasing the fund balance commitment to remain at at least 12%. Had previously been at 5%. The procedure for that includes, once the external auditor has reviewed the county's financial statements for the prior year and has confirmed the fund balance of the general fund, the budget director and the CFO will convey to the board the amounts and assignments of the fund balance, which will be included in the financial statement. Here's the problem. You don't have the financial statements for 2023. Those are late. Those should have been completed at least months ago. I don't know if there's a reason for that.
There is.
But it does... I understand. There's always a reason for something. I understand. But there's an issue in hand in that you cannot comply with your new policy because you do not have the information at hand right now. You don't have completed statements. You don't have accountability in your offices for completing those statements. That's an issue, and it's something that should be addressed, to actually look at a budget, to know what you're looking at for even the next year after that. So it's one of the things that, you know, you'll have to handle as you go through. I know it's difficult. So on the election, I do want to commend the staff here. Beth Hopkins' team was stellar yesterday with opening the mail-in ballots. I was here at 7:00 a.m., stayed the entire day until all counts were done. And Beth Hopkins' team, at least until they were completed about 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon, were on top of everything. Everything looked right. We had a lot of watchers. There was opportunity for watchers to look at things, and I do appreciate that very much. So thank you to Beth for that, and I want to give her public appreciation for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi there. Care Francis. Just want to go back to the budget. We have one question. What was the actual cost of the construction for the medical building? Do we know?
I don't know off the top of my head... oh, up here, ma'am. Up here. Sorry. I don't know off the top of my head, but we can get you that, those figures.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. So again, Care Francis, Ruhrburg Township. Just three things that I'd like to maybe just mention. It's really hard for the public to actually have a prepared statement when we don't know what the actual agenda is. Today's agenda went on this morning onto the website. If there's any possibility that you could get us the agenda potentially maybe five days before a public meeting?
Ma'am, I'm sorry. The agenda was posted on Monday. We're required to post 24 hours before the meeting.
I didn't see it on there this morning. I looked.
No, it was posted...
Monday afternoon.
It was posted Monday afternoon. We're required by law to post it 24 hours prior, and all the...
Wednesday afternoon.
Right, we were off yesterday, so that's why we posted it on Monday. But this is all... all of the legislation in the backup, everything is on there. Everything we vote on, you can see. It's all on there.
Okay. Potentially, then, maybe there was a flaw in my computer, and I apologize if that's the case. But she had this...
Go ahead, ma'am. I'm sorry.
If we can maybe get that addressed, that'd be awesome. The public meetings were amazing. The budget meetings in the evening, it's really hard for a lot of us to get here during the day. If there's anything we could do to potentially get these meetings in the evening, maybe, again, just doing those roving meetings, that was very helpful for the community to be involved. You know, these cameras here, they focus on us. It's really hard when you're watching the replay of the video to actually hear some of the comments that are meeting, that are being made by all of you. So if we can have the camera actually maybe focusing on everyone?
Just to evacuate the mic.
Yeah. No problems. So again, you know, it's really... it's difficult. So, if we can have the camera actually maybe focusing on everyone?
Should you back away from the microphone?
Yeah, no problems. So, again, you know, it's really, it's difficult for people that are watching these to actually see your responses as well. I mean, it's great that the community is on camera, but we'd really like to see, when we're watching the videos, we'd like to see your responses. It's hard when we can't hear sometimes the microphone. Like, I couldn't hear back there myself what was being said. So, it's hard when you're watching the replay as well. And I guess I heard something about there's a lawsuit that was mentioned today. What's that lawsuit about? Because I put a right to know in about a lawsuit? Is there a lawsuit? Do you have a lawsuit right now?
There's lawsuits every day. I don't know what you're referring to.
About the budget? No?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Just one other comment, they did a fantastic job with the election. Thank you very, very much. It was amazing, very smooth. Thank you, we appreciate you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Commissioner Chirmak, Commissioner's other business?
Well, again, I want to also thank the election department, Beth and Glenn and everybody else. It's a small but mighty team, and they did a phenomenal job. They do it every year. I don't know how they do what they do, but they do an excellent job. Again, if there's any questions, I know my, some of my team members are here from my finance team. If anybody has any other questions before we leave, we'll be happy to address them if possible. We'll continue working on this. I'll just add that, you know, growing up in my family business and working for my grandfather and father, they didn't accept the word "can't," so "can't" is not in my vocabulary, except for this. I can't wait to go to the restroom, so I'm going to excuse myself right now, so thank you.
Okay.
Again, really quick, just want to thank Beth and Board of Registration for the hard work, time, and dedication that they, that they put in. What a, what a wonderful job, and, you know, without a doubt, you know, one of the best, obviously, I think, you know, throughout, throughout our Commonwealth. Just really quick, a couple points. You know, yes, I mean, certainly for me, trying to lower taxes was certainly a priority of mine before I entered office, and I think certainly remains one, hopefully one day, but the reality of the situation is that Commissioner Gahan and I inherited a county on the brink of collapse with a massive structural deficit. And Commissioner Gahan and I are working tirelessly every day to find solutions while still addressing the county's financial crisis. But just really quick, I'd like to acknowledge a few other priorities that our administration has fulfilled since taking office. In just this short time, Commissioner Gahan and I have made great strides in restoring integrity to local government through transparency, accountability, the creation of a new code of conduct. I think we've done a great job empowering small businesses. For example, Commissioner Gahan and I have granted 29 small business grants through the ComLad and Fashan Grant Program for small businesses throughout Lackawanna County, which we proudly distributed. When it comes to controlling crime, we've made great progress by partnering with the City of Scranton to develop an evidence-based community violence intervention program that focuses on preventing violence in our community. So, Commissioner Gahan and I remain committed to making Lackawanna County a better place for all, and will continue to lead with transparency, respect, and dedication. And just really quick, I certainly appreciate everybody's comments today. And even before, you know, being in this position that I'm in as an elected official, I'm an American. I have a wife, I have two kids. I hope gas is a dollar. I hope eggs are 99 cents. But, you know, here at the county, difficult decisions need to be made, and they need to be made every single day. But at the end of that day, I'm still rooting for each and every one of us, roughly 220,000 residents of the county, to succeed. Certainly, you know, hoping as a county, as a state, and certainly as a country as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just a few things. I, we have talked about this budget ad nauseam over the last month. We introduced it on October 15th through the Home Rule Charter. We stood in front of the people of the county on multiple occasions in the Down Valley, Up Valley, and here in Scranton, and we explained exactly what was going on, and I really honestly believe that we gave you the truth. I just want to check few, check through a few things today, again, just to make the point that you hear all these comments that are just not true. And there's so much misinformation that Commissioner McGloin and I did not cut anything. We have to make more cuts. We cut 90 positions out of the budget. That's almost 10% of the workforce. Prior to this, we cut the entire Department of Health, $3.5 million that Commissioner Chirmak was for and advocated for, but didn't know how he was going to fund it. We cut that immediately, almost immediately upon taking office after analysis. We instituted a hiring freeze. We put a hold on all purchasing other than for public safety and important operations, essential operations, and we're finally paying bills on time in the county. Remember, we inherited an operation here in Lackawanna County where there was almost $19 million in unpaid bills, literally dysfunctional, dysfunctional. So, we've changed that. We also, upon looking at this budget, I mentioned the 90 full-time and part-time positions across 19 departments. We, healthcare was brought up today. We agree, the healthcare costs are out of control. They're rising by 9% next year, about $2.8 million. So, what did we do? We literally took it upon ourselves, starting with us, because this has to be negotiated with the bargaining units, and we increased co-pays, we increased deductibles, and we're doing a number of different things with healthcare, but we started with, with us. We started with the commissioners and the administration and the management. And we're not going to know the savings until the open enrollment period is ending, is over, but we know that they'll be significant. We cut overtime costs in the budget by $1.25 million that Commissioner Chirmak is advocating to put back in the budget. So, we talk about savings that, I don't know how that makes sense. We established priority-based budgeting, which is, instead of zero-based budgeting, it's a different way of doing it, and that will be a priority of ours, taking a look at the budget according to actual priorities, rather than just how we've, we've done, we've done it this way, and therefore, we're going to continue to do it that way. In terms of revenue, we implemented the Cash Fest program, working with the Treasurer's Office. Other counties have implemented that, and they've seen millions of dollars in revenue. So, we're hoping that that ends up panning out for next year. The pension plan is something that has come up. We're finally funding the pension plan. I could go on and on and on and on and on, but one thing I will say is that, and I've ended every budget hearing with this, we told you, we promised all of the taxpayers of Lackawanna County that we were going to tell you the truth, and we have told you the truth, and it is uncomfortable, we're not gaining any additional friends by doing it, but we told you that we were going to give it to you straight. Commissioner McGloin mentioned this earlier. We both have small families with small children, we have parents who are senior citizens, and we understand the frustration. We truly, truly do, and we've heard from all of you over the last month or so, all over the county. But the reality is, this county was driven into the ground by the previous administration, including, and coincidentally, he's not here, Commissioner Chirmak. Commissioner Chirmak did not show up to any of the budget hearings, zero. Put forward a, and I'm being as respectful as I, as I possibly can, put forward a document and then didn't answer any questions about it, as one of the former commissioners correctly pointed out. I mean, we put forward a plan, and then we sat there, we listened to your comments, and we answered as intelligently and as educated as we could all of your questions. He put this together. I could rip this apart, and I'm not going to waste everybody's time, I could rip this apart, line item by line item by line item, because the numbers are literally incorrect. We talk about the, the budget team that he put together, I got to tell you, this is wrong. And again, I did this at the last budget hearing, and I'll just give you a quick example. Someone got up here today and talked about the Office of Youth and Family Services, okay? It's been one of our top priorities since we took office in January, because that was an agency that was floundering, and I'm happy to say today that we believe that we're on the right track. His proposal, if you want to call it that, eliminates dozens of caseworkers, dozens of caseworkers who are literally charged with protecting and taking care of the children and the families in this county. And then he incorrectly cites the figures in here, saying that they're going to save all this money, when we're reimbursed for these positions 80% by the state government, 80% by the state government. Eliminates positions in our 911 department, and those positions are funded 100% by the state government, but yet uses those as savings to try to make everybody, I guess, feel nice and warm inside, that there's some alternative plan that's going to save the county. It is complete nonsense. Says there's $17 million in ARPA funding, and he's going to plug the hole, plug the budget with that? Nonsense. There's not $17 million, there's five in unobligated funds. So, what I'm here to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, is, that's an empty chair right there. It was empty for the past month when we had, when we listened to the people of this county. He ran out of here like a coward, because he is one, and he put forward, he put forward a plan that isn't worth the paper it's written on, but we're giving you the truth, and that's the way that it's going to be. But we are here answering to the people, answering to the people of this county, and unfortunately, he ran out of here with his tail between his legs, because he knows in his heart, this isn't, anybody with a calculator knows that this isn't correct. So, thank you, thank you very much, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.